Good evening, welcome to tonight's city council meeting. It's April 1st at 6 o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor pro Tim Teeter?
Here.
Councilmember Madera?
Here.
Councilmember Frank?
Present.
Councilmember Davis?
Present.
Councilmember Douglas? Councilmember Huesman?
Present.
Councilmember Elliott?
Present.
Councilmember Huardiola?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, we're all here except for Councilman Douglas. Is there a motion to excuse his absence? Mr. Huesman?
Motion to excuse Councilman Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. Huardiola.
Second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Next, I'd like to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, now if the clerk will please pass around the microphone and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Deborah Bollock, Commerce City Historical Society.
June Younger.
Thank you.
Kim Messina with Brighton and Commerce City Victim Services.
Goshaa Schmitz with the 17th Judicial Sexual Assault Response Team.
Tony Hadameo of Parks Recreation and Golf.
Nancy Klaske with the Colorado State Forest Service.
Clint Nichols, Commerce City Police Department.
Brock Chapman, SHUT Communities for Nexus North.
Blair Gob, 1975 Monaco Street.
Perry Anne Hahn.
Rick Hill.
Arla Johnson.
Perry Johnson.
Keith Saban.
John Pointon Adams 14 Schools.
Troy Whitmore, RTD District K.
Hi, Chantel Lewis, RTD District B.
Tom Green with United Power.
Vicki Kettler from Commerce City.
Kevin North of A-1 Organics.
Erin Baneras on behalf of A-1 Organics.
Regina Drexler on behalf of A-1 Organics.
All right, thank you all for being here today. We'll start off our meeting with some recognition. Start with the Sexual Assault Awareness Month and National Crime Victims Rights Week. I'd like to invite the Victim Services Division forward.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Kim Messina. I'm the Victim Services Manager for Brighton and Commerce City. Were you gonna read the proclamation first?
Yep, I'll have them read it. I just wanted to make sure that you were all set.
I was just so excited to get up here.
I know you are. All right. I have a proclamation. Would the city attorney please read that proclamation?
Whereas every day women, men, children, and children across Colorado suffer the pain and trauma of rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment, and whereas this crime occurs far too frequently, goes unreported far too often, and leaves long-lasting physical and emotional scars; and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact citizens in Commerce City regardless of age, race, or gender; and whereas the Commerce City Police Department, as a certified You Have Options agency, remains committed to offering reporting options to victims of sexual assault while responding to sexual violence with a victim-centered, offender-focused approach; and whereas the Commerce City Police Department has extended their commitment to supporting victims and bringing perpetrators to justice with the launch of the Sexual Assault Task Force with the Brighton Police Department, bringing with it a higher level of investigation and response to victims in our community; and whereas during National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, we recommit ourselves not only to lifting the veil of secrecy and shame surrounding sexual violence, but also to raising awareness, expanding support for victims, and strengthening our response; and whereas prevention is possible when the entire Commerce City community is involved, the first step is increasing awareness through education and supporting victims. It is time for all of us to take action in ending sexual assault. Now therefore, it is proclaimed by the Mayor Sean Ford and the City Council of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, that the month of April 2019 is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and they urge the residents of Commerce City to work together to eliminate sexual assault from our community.
Thank you. The proclamation's been read. Is there a motion? Mr. Huesman?
Motion to approve the proclamation declaring April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Commerce City.
Thank you. Councilman Davis?
I'd second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Kim, we appreciate what you and the task force does and the partnership with Brighton, and want to turn it over to you if there's anything you'd like to expand on.
Well, thank you very much for proclaiming April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And this year's theme is "I Ask," which is more about prevention. It's more about having healthy relationships and asking for consent, since we know consent is a very clear piece that really kind of clears up any boundary issues that there might be. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the You Have Options program continues to be a huge success, I believe, here in Commerce City as well as in Brighton. It allows victims those access points to come into the criminal justice process and to talk with law enforcement, as well as get the advocacy and medical that's much needed as those barriers to reporting to law enforcement. Also want to just talk a little bit about the Sexual Assault Task Force. We've had a year, a full year, under our belt. We've seen about a 69% increase that the task force has handled in cases, and we've seen about a 48% increase in victims that we've served. So we're really proud of the great work that the task force is doing and allows our community members to come forward and access the services that they need. So, thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
I also have the 17th Judicial District SART Coordinator that just wanted to say a couple of words.
Sure, absolutely.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Goshaa Schmitz, and I'm the 17th Judicial Sexual Assault Response Team Coordinator, and I wanted to thank you all for taking the time to issue this important proclamation recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. The Commerce City Police Department has been a leader within the 17th Judicial District and the state of Colorado in their commitment in supporting victims and bringing perpetrators to justice. This has been evident through their certification as a You Have Options agency, and more recently the formation of the Sexual Assault Task Force with the Brighton Police Department, which they have brought on the SART as a community partner. These commitments have brought a higher level of investigation and response to the victims in Commerce City. As a member of the 17th Judicial SART team, the Commerce City Police Department has taken on an active role in collaborating with agencies across the judicial district. This has led to cross-agency collaboration which promotes a victim-centered and offender-focused response to sexual assault. The SART and the Commerce City Police Department could not do the work they do without the support of the Commerce City City Council. It is with your support and the proclamation you are issuing today, we are able to support victims of sexual assault and take a stand as a community against sexual violence. By issuing this proclamation, you are aiding in lifting the veil of secrecy, so thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd like to invite the council to come down and take a picture as we give the proclamation. All right. I have another proclamation here, is National Crime Victims Rights Week. Will the city attorney please read that proclamation?
Whereas in 1982, the president's task force on victims of crime envisioned a national commitment to a more equitable and supportive response to victims, and whereas this commemorative week celebrates the energy, perseverance, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims; and whereas crime can leave a lasting impact on any person regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status; and whereas incorporating communities' existing experts and trusted sources of support into efforts to fully serve survivors will develop a criminal justice system response that is truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime; and whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the rights to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs rebuilds the trust in the criminal justice and social service systems; and whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenging to reach or serve, are offered culturally and linguistically accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of crime; and whereas Commerce City is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for a better future for all victims and survivors, now therefore, it is proclaimed by the Mayor Sean Ford and the City Council of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, that the week of April 7 to 13, 2019, is Crime Victims Rights Week.
Thank you. Proclamation's been read. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation, National Crime Victims Rights Week.
All right, just a second. Who's got the $5 over there? Ben?
If I like to do that.
That's a violation of our council policies right there. All right, Mr. Huesman? I've got a motion on the floor. No, I'd like you to consider seconding the motion on the floor to accept the proclamation as read.
Second a motion to accept the proclamation as read.
Thank you. See, it's easy for me to pick on someone when their phone goes off. All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, chief, who's all coming up for this one? Same ladies? And you?
It's just the chief and I.
Just the chief and you?
Just the chief and I.
That's enough.
You're right, that is enough, huh? Do you want to? Okay. So I can't think of a more appropriate theme for this year's, to celebrate Crime Victims' Rights Week, in regards to honoring our past and creating hope for the future. We celebrate the progress made by those before us and look into the future for the progress that we'll continue to make. I can tell you, in 2013, together Brighton and Commerce City served around 2,200 victims. In 2018, we served over 3,468. We increased our on-scene response over the last four years to 152%, and that means that the staff and volunteers are meeting victims where they need us the most, and that's at the time that it happens. And due to the commitment from council, from command staff, from the chiefs in both cities, as well as our officers, who now look at trauma-informed care for when we work with victims of crime, so we appreciate all of your support, and we hope to continue to do this great work.
Thank you.
We also, sorry, we also have some pins that we'd like to give you. Since this is such a busy month, we brought together the "I Ask" and the National Crime Victims Rights Week pin into one lapel pin, and we'd be honored if you'd wear it.
Absolutely. And it's a fitting time to have this. I noticed last night on Facebook, there was a rash of people breaking into cars and stuff, and I know you deal with that all the time, but we want you to reduce the crime as much as you can. So this just brings us to the forefront, right?
Absolutely.
All right. The council will join me down front, please. All right. One more recognition. I'd like to ask Parks and Rec staff to come forward. While they're coming forward, I'd like to ask the attorney to please read the proclamation.
Whereas the City of Commerce City desires to recognize and observe Arbor Day along with others across the nation and throughout the world, and whereas the City of Commerce City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the 28th consecutive year; and whereas the City Council and staff wish to promote an interest in the planting of trees in residential areas as well as city-owned parks, trails, and open space; and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, now therefore, the City Council of Commerce City declares April 19, 2019, as Arbor Day, recognized with activities such as providing tree seedlings and tree care information to the community. The City Council urges all residents to support efforts to care for our trees, woodlands, and support the city's community forestry program.
All righty. Is there a motion, Mr. Teeter?
I can make a motion to approve the Arbor Day and Tree City USA recognition.
All righty. Mr. Huesman?
I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Turn it over to Mr. Harmel.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
It's my honor to be here tonight for the presentation along with Nancy Klaske with the Colorado State Forest Service Office, to present the city with the 28th consecutive Tree City USA Award. We will, Commerce City will be celebrating Arbor Day on April 19th and having tree seedlings available for residents at the Bison Ridge and Eagle Point Recreation Centers. Right now, I'd like to introduce Nancy to present the award.
All right.
Thanks, Tony, and thank you to Mayor Ford and the council for having me here tonight again and putting me on the agenda for the, to present the 28th Tree City USA Award. The Arbor Day Foundation and Colorado State Forest Service recognize that there is no automatic renewal of this award, and that cities must meet the four standards to be eligible. These standards are that you have a tree board or professional tree manager, that you have a basic public tree care ordinance in place, a community forestry program spending at least $2 per capita on urban forestry, and an Arbor Day observance. The Tree City USA program was started in 1976 by the Arbor Day Foundation. It is a nationwide movement that provides the framework necessary for communities to manage and expand their public trees. We are glad to see that Commerce City continues to put emphasis on the importance of this program. And Tony gave me the 2018 forestry accomplishments, which were the new construction projects, planting 662 new trees, park maintenance operations, planted 75 new trees in various city parks, trails, and open space, and Commerce City tree inventory, owned and maintained properties, 3,573. While aesthetic values are important, the support and investment you make in your urban trees do much more for your community. Conserving energy, they've found that three trees around buildings can cut energy by 25%, increases property values, 7% to 20% increases in property values have been proved, and higher shopping district revenues by having trees. They also give a lot of social benefits. They give you greater community connection, they improve community pride with annual recognition events, they educate people living in your city about the value of the trees and the importance of sustainable tree management, and the overall health and well-being by cleaning our air and improving water sheds. 92% of Americans recognize personal benefits of planting trees in their communities. Trees are improving neighborhoods and communities across the country and are only infrastructure that actually increases in value over time. For cities that appreciate the benefits that trees provide and dedicate themselves to caring for them, the participation in the Tree City USA program ensures that their investment in community trees is profitable and long-lasting. We continue to learn more about these benefits of our tree programs and what they provide in our communities. So thank you, Commerce City, for all the hard work and for making this program a priority again this year. Congratulations on your 28th Tree City USA recognition.
Thank you. All righty, I think we have some comments. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, I'd like to thank you for this program. My yard is full of evergreens. I planted them all. I have one that, when I was back on the fire department back in the 70s, I planted one of those little saplings that is now over 40 feet tall. And the one that Tony gave me when I first got on council here on Arbor Day, Arbor Day Week, it is now over 12-foot tall, so, thank you very much.
Yeah, that's great, and we really appreciate the award, but I have to tell you, it's our Parks Department that earns that award every year. It's Tony and the guys that work with Tony to make that happen. The one question I did have is, where are we at with this Emerald Ash Board? Is that slowing down at all, or is it still moving our way?
It's still going, yeah. They haven't found it outside Boulder County yet, but it's probably only a year of time.
If we can keep it contained to Boulder County, we'll be all right. Let's try to do that, okay? All right, if everybody will join me down front, please. Mr. Davis, could I have you just, just a tad? Yep, perfect. All righty. Moving on in our agenda, we get to our citizen communication portion of the agenda. For the public to address the council on businesses and affairs of the city, if you're here to speak on an ordinance or a resolution that is not on the consent agenda, please wait until that agenda item is called. The City Council is unable to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before the City Council. Ask you to please reserve those comments for the appropriate public hearing. When I call your name, please come up to the podium and give your name and address for the record, and keep your comments limited to three minutes, and thank you. There are several people who have signed up today, and I noticed that there are some that have signed up for Conditional Use Permit 121-19. I'd have to ask you to reserve that for the appropriate public hearing to come up and offer your comments at that time. And so, we have a public hearing that is scheduled on our agenda. We do allow public comment, and we reserve it for the time during the public hearing. Purpose is that our council cannot take testimony outside of that hearing, so we have to reserve and wait for that hearing to be open to receive that testimony. So, those of you who have signed up for, to speak during that conditional use permit hearing, I would ask that you wait until then, and I will not be calling on you for the citizen and communication portion of the meeting. I'll start out with Tom Green. Good evening.
Good evening. Tom Green, 500 Cooperative Way, Brighton, speaking here tonight on behalf of United Power. Thank you, Mayor, and council members, for this opportunity. As you know, United Power is an electric cooperative, and as part of our bylaws, we annually hold a meeting of the membership, because we're owned by the members we serve, and at that meeting, we present our activities of last year, our financial performance. We also elected directors there. But this year's kind of special for us, because it's our 80th anniversary. 80 years United Power's been in business in this area, and we are happy to do it, and because of that, we're taking this meeting to basically highlight some of those franchise cities we serve, including the City of Commerce City. And so, we extend this formal invitation for all the council members and also the citizen members of United Power that live in Commerce City, to please come by to our annual meeting, April 17th. It'll be at the Adams County Regional Facility there, which is commonly known as the Fairgrounds. We'll give you a free meal, and we have plenty of our prizes, and a lot of great things for them, and as a little bit, I don't want to call it a bribe, I have brought a dozen cookies and a formal invitation for the city council, and I guess the city manager too. So, we please encourage you to come by, it's gonna be a great event, and we also will have election of directors there too, so please come by and celebrate your electric cooperative, as we celebrate 80 years of service to this area. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. I would normally tell you to hand those to the city attorney, but I'm gonna ask you to give them to the city clerk. I don't trust them on that side of the road. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. See you there.
Next, we have a couple of folks here from RTD, and I'm glad that they're here to come in and introduce themselves to us. I don't know, do you want to come up together? Or you want to come up individually? So we've got Troy Whitmore and Chantel Lewis. You're more than welcome to do it either way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were just strategizing. We'd like to have six minutes, so...
Yeah, I figured you were back there thinking, man, we should've... Yeah, I figured you were back there thinking, man, we should have brought cookies, because Tom just showed up.
We were looking for milk, to tell you the truth. Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. It's such a pleasure to be here. I'm Troy Whitmore, your District K Director for RTD. District K includes all of Commerce City, all of Brighton, a great portion of Thornton, Henderson, and much of unincorporated Adams County, and that's where I reside. And there are seven new board members on RTD, and I gotta tell you, I'm one of the luckiest people on the planet, because A, I won my election, and B, I get to serve with people like Chantel, because we've got a great, great cast of new leaders at RTD. So, quickly, because I know we don't have a lot of time, a couple of things you want to know about. Probably first and foremost is, is the N-line. We had good news today, the G-line will open on April 26th. That's the one from Union Station going to Wheat Ridge in Arvada. N-line is under testing now, so perhaps you have seen cars up and down, you'll see more and more over the next couple of months. The good news, testing means we're getting closer. The bad news means, testing means horns. So, for safety reasons at all at-grade crossings, as long as we're testing, we will have to use the horns. The good news for the N-line is there's only five public at-grade crossings in the 13-mile stretch and one private. So, unlike the G-line and the A-line, the horns are spaced farther apart, and hopefully residents or businesses aren't hearing multiple ones, but just one that's nearby. Our goal is to have the N-line open a year from now, so I hope we're celebrating in first quarter of 2020. It's a little different, RTD will be running the N-line instead of a concession error. We're looking forward to that. We'll have a separate dispatch center, and we'll have, you know, firsthand knowledge of how things are working, because they will, all the crews will be our employees, so we're real excited about that. One of the things that I talked to the mayor about a while back is, Troy, come see us, whether you've got good news or bad news. And I think that's very appropriate. The good news is the N-line. The bad news is we need to talk about your bus route from older part of town over here. I think we had a grant that was formed to run that line. It's underperforming. So, we need to talk about that and look at that and see what we can do before it's too late. And that's one of the things I pledged to do during the election, is let's talk ahead of time instead of after the fact. So, we need to look at that. With that, I appreciate everybody's support, and now, let me turn it over to the smart one of the bunch, Chantel Lewis, who's one of our neighboring directors.
Alright, now, Chantel, that's gonna beep here in a minute.
Okay.
But since there's two of you, you have three minutes too. You signed up as well, so don't let that bother you, go right ahead.
Thank you so much. I do not intend to use the entire three minutes. My name is Chantel Lewis, I represent District B, and District B actually encompasses Aurora... Oh, you said that was going to happen. Aurora within Adams County, the city and county of Denver, and also Adams, unincorporated Adams County, south of Denver. And I will talk to you a little bit about the board and the makeup of the board, so there are 15 elected directors, each of them representing a geographical area with about 180,000 folks that they're representing, so constituents. Seven of the board members are newly elected, and it has been a really great group to work alongside of. So, we've had, we typically have our board meetings on Tuesdays. The board has been really fortunate that the board staff has given us the opportunity to participate in orientations, and so, the opportunity to learn about the agency as newly elected leaders, and that's been incredible. We also participate in what we call committee meetings. For me, specifically, I belong to the General Manager Oversight Committee, as well as the Civil Rights Committee. Sorry, I hate public speaking. I don't know why I run for office.
Me too.
So, one of the things that I'm really committed to, and also what I hear from the other electives within the RT board, is that we're really, we really want to have conversations about, around equitable access to transit, and how we can have conversations that are grounded in equity. And then, how can we bring communities closer to the decision-making within the agency? And so, doing just this, coming out to introduce ourselves to you, to build those partnerships across governmental agencies as well. And I think that pretty much concludes what I wanted to share with you all. I do have some business cards, if you'd like to reach out to me, I'm happy to have coffee or tea with any of you, and with any of you as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Great, thanks. Before you go sit down, I want to at least open it up for the council to have the opportunity to ask you questions, since you're here, and I want to thank you both. And just like I had mentioned to Troy, it's important that we see RTD on a regular basis so that we can know what's happening. We're, you know, for years now, we've been working on the N-line, and we've been trying to set our future budgets and planning around information around the station, and improvements that have to go in. And we had a discussion at our last budget retreat, I was talking to some of the newer council members, I'll be going off in November, there'll be five new members, and they have to start planning, but because it's been pushed back and pushed back and pushed back, makes it really hard for us to have the timing right to put that infrastructure in place so that our infrastructure's in place when we start seeing that demand. When it comes to bus routes in Commerce City, we're always getting hit with, there's additional bus routes needed. Once that light rail station opens up, there's gonna be a lot of people busing in and out of that station, which could have a demand on some of our other routes. I think the route that you were talking about, Troy, I can't think of the name of it though...
I believe it was 62, yeah.
Okay, and, you know, one of the things where I always would get residents, would come to me with their frustrations about bus routes, is we get a bus route started, I know this one's been there for a little while, but it seems like it's a short time later, and RTD goes, it's underperforming. And for me, what I want to do is, a lot of our residents don't know that that route is there yet and operating yet. And I'd like to work out, at least come to some way to work together to promote those routes to our residents so that they aren't underperforming, because we've had routes that were underperforming and ended up losing those routes, and then people are screaming, how come we don't have this route? You should really have a route here. Well, it was there, they never knew it was there. So, I'd like to really try to work collaboratively with RTD to try to figure out a way to promote what routes are needed and what routes are open, and make sure that we get the ridership, because I know like the 104 is cranking. We actually had to add more buses to that route. So, we want to make sure we're trying our best to serve our public, and I'd rather be having conversations with RTD to improve our services, rather than like some of these other cities talking about, how do we create our own type of shuttle service through our community? There's gotta be a better way to successfully use our tax dollars, so it starts right here with you guys coming in, so, so, thanks again. Is there anyone on council that has any questions or comments for RTD representatives that are here this evening? Mr. Teeter?
Thank you, Mayor. For the council that is unaware of this, Troy is also with the United Power, so I thought I'd make that known, that he is also one of their members. And yes, the good thing about the horns is, it's not gonna, they're not gonna sound in Commerce City, so we'll be alright with that. They won't be sounding when they come into the station, correct?
There's one private crossing, I think, in Commerce City that you'll have a horn.
Okay, alright.
Along Colorado Boulevard, just south of the station, but I think that's the only at-grade crossing.
I didn't bring my list, I think that's correct.
Okay.
I think so.
I'm sorry about that, I thought we was lucking out, but...
No, we have the longest bridge, though, right? And we have one private crossing goes into that little industrial park west of Colorado, south of the station, but we're not gonna have a huge impact with horns because of the light rail. But again, appreciate you guys coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
And because I had 15 seconds left, I'm gonna take it, because I forgot something very important, is, speaking of communications and talking about routes and things of this nature, we want to offer up our staff and ourselves for study sessions when we can have a more in-depth conversation, when the time is right for you folks. We'll be here, okay? So, remember that, and that'll help with the exchange of information. And one final thought, thank you for your service, council member. Welcome.
Thanks, Troy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chantel.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Next on the list, Keith Saban. To the public hearing? Yeah, we'll have to wait on you then, thank you. Yeah, so if you didn't write down what purpose you were here for, then it's hard for me to tell, and I'll call on you anyway, just let me know, it's okay. Just let me know, that way I don't have you come up and take information where we're not supposed to have it. Perry and Arla, same thing? Alright. We'll go to Deborah Bollock.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
Deborah Bollock, 6130 Ivanhoe Street, Commerce City. I'm here tonight to invite you to our annual reception, and we were in here a couple weeks ago when we did our presentation for the Historical Society, but at that time, we weren't releasing who we were honoring, so I just want to tell you who our honorees are for this year. We're gonna honor Tim Moore for the Recreation Center. I don't know if you're aware of it, but he's been doing this for over 40 years, and he deserves this award. Betty Peppin, I know some of you know Betty Peppin, and that will be Positomy, Positomy Humously. And then, the Commerce City Parks Recreation and Golf, we're gonna honor them, and Kids First Healthcare, and United Power. And they've already told you that they've been in business for 80 years. So, this isn't just a reception, but you will learn history as well, because we tell you why we nominated them and why they have contributed to the history of our city. And so, it isn't just about listening to a bunch of people talk, but you'll really learn the history in this presentation. So, I just wanted to invite you to that, and I do have some flyers, if we can get those handed out to them. And then, I also want to thank Crystal for your years of service. And as you start your next chapter in your life, I just wish you the best of everything and good luck, and thanks for everything that you've done for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Alright, Renee Bollock. And I need to, because there are a few people in the audience who have announced that they're running for office, that I need to make a comment that there's no campaigning from the dais.
Okay, I'm not the dais.
Well, yeah, from the podium or the dais. Mr. Bollock, you know better, and I just want to make sure that I treat you like I would treat anybody else that would come up here that has applied for a position to serve this city.
Yes, sir. Renee Bollock, 6130 Ivanhoe Street. And before I start, I was going to ask, is there going to be a later recognition with public speaking for Crystal, so I know whether to speak now or speak at that time?
Yeah, I think we'll open it up and allow some speaking to take place, and then there will be appetizers type of thing, hors d'oeuvres or whatever in the atrium. So, we'll, there'll be a time when we recognize her later this evening.
Okay, I will hold my remarks until that time.
Otherwise, you'll be way out of, way out of place.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I have Blair and Brenda. Blair Gab and Brenda Bowers, and you're here for the hearing, correct? Alright, so, I'll check you off on that. Let's go to Vicki Kettler.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Kettler. I live at 15722 East 107th Avenue in Commerce City. I would like to make you all aware of what many of your Commerce City citizens have been experiencing. I am with about a group of 18 homeowners, many with mineral rights, who have been successful in going through all of the hoops and protesting the extraction, oil and gas application for eight mega drilling and spacing units in our residential area of Reunion, Commerce City. We were told to plead everything in legal form. We were successful in getting our protest finally recognized by COJCC, abiding by all of their rules. This whole process has been biased and prejudiced against any protesting families and homeowners, and it favors the oil and gas companies. We had our initial pre-hearing conference last Friday, March 29th, and at least 20 protesters showed up, the most that the hearing officer, James Rouse, said has ever been present. In order to protect those who could not attend, we were told that we had to provide an attorney, which we were able to get at the last minute, who was not familiar with oil and gas, to attend on their behalf, otherwise their protest would have been dismissed. Our hearing date has been set for June 17th and 18th, and Mr. Rouse mentioned several times that we need legal counsel. We have searched and called many attorneys, no success, they all said they could not help us. April 1st, today, extraction was supposed to produce an all-interested parties joint proposed case management order, and all parties have in two days to respond. Our protest will be dismissed unless we attend all future pre-hearings in person, or we could get legal counsel. We are desperate citizens and concerned homeowners who are fighting to protect our liberty, health, safety, environment, and all of our rights to live in our homes without the fear of industrialized oil and gas activities destroying our neighborhoods. We do not have the financial means to fight the endless funds the oil and gas companies are spending on legal representation. We're hopeful the laws will change to protect the citizens soon, but we are in urgent need to seek legal counsel now to help us with our June hearing date. We ask the Commerce City Council to please help protect the lives and property of all of its citizens, and for any legal guidance that you can give us. Please accept some of our documents of the process that we have been going through. Thank you.
Thank you. Hand it over here to the attorney. There you go. Appreciate you coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Alright, and the last one on the list is also here for the Conditional Use Hearing, Rick and Perry Hill. Just wanted to make sure I didn't forget you, so, you're, I've got you marked down to speak during the hearing. So, anyone who showed up later and didn't get a chance to sign up for citizen communication that intended to come here for citizen communication, state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name's Doug Wolf, I live at 9241 Monaco, Henderson, Colorado, across the corner from A1.
We're not gonna talk about A1 because it's a conditional use permit, and I have to open that hearing before this council can receive testimony. So, when, when, when the, when the hearing is open, then I'll ask for people to speak on the hearing, alright?
Very good.
Thank you. Is there anyone here outside of the hearing that is scheduled for tonight, that came to speak during citizen communication on items other than land use cases that are before us? Seeing none, we're gonna continue on in our agenda. Have the consent agenda, which includes items that are routine and procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial, they are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for a further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are 11 items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none. I'm open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Hughesman?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented by council, seated.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
A motion and second. Will the city attorney please read the titles of the consent agenda items?
Minutes of February 4, 2019, the minutes of March 4, 2019, the minutes of March 18, 2019, ordinance AN25019, and ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A attached here to and made a part here of generally located at the southeast corner of Buckley Road and East 88th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado. Ordinance 2198, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation grant in the amount of $15,000 for DUI enforcement efforts and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2204, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Funds, in the amount of $14,000 for the Bulletproof Vest Program in the Police Department and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2205, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation grant in the amount of $5,580 for click-it-or-ticket efforts and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Resolution 2019-37, resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement regarding establishing the Adams County Communication Center Authority. Resolution 2019-38, resolution authorizing a word of contract for RTD stationary improvements, 72nd Avenue and Colorado Boulevard project. Resolution... Resolution twenty nineteen dash three-nine, resolution amending council policy CP twenty-one regarding filling of council vacancies. Ordinance Z nine-four-five-one-seven-one-nine, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, for rezoning to PUD Zone District and approving a PUD Zone document for the property described in Exhibit A attached here to and made a part hereof, generally located on the southeast corner of Buckley Road and East Eighty-Eighth Avenue, from Adco, unincorporated Adams County, to PUD planned unit development.
Thank you. And I've had a motion and a second. The titles have all been read, and I'll ask for a roll call vote. All right, for the record, everyone has approved the consent agenda this evening, other than the one excused absence. And we move into public hearings. Resolution twenty nineteen dash nineteen, Nexus North at DIA Metro District Service Plan. I will remind the council to use the public hearing portion to ask questions, but wait until the public hearing is closed to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Invite staff forward to make their presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of city council. The first public hearing before you tonight is a Metro District Service Plan and Intergovernmental Agreement for Nexus North at DIA Metropolitan District. The subject property is approximately one hundred and fifty-eight acres, located at the southeast corner of Eighty-Eighth Avenue and Buckley Road. It was currently considered for zoning and annexation on consent agenda this evening. It's proposed to be zoned PUD, zoning for light industrial and unemployment center. The purpose of a metro district is to finance the construction of public infrastructure improvements for the use and benefit of the anticipated taxpayers of the district. The service plan authorizes the district to issue debt and provide, to provide the infrastructure improvements, and the debt is paid by the district through fees, tax revenues collected from the mill levy. The district debt is not an obligation of the city and does not impact the city's budget. The approval is part of a formation process of a metro district. With council's approval, the petitioners will file it to district court and seek an election in May to officially form the district. The petitioner is the landowner, and council is reviewing the service plan and a proposed IGA attached to the service plan that will be executed after the district forms. Both the service plan and the IGA largely conform to the city's templates, and the property is now located within the city limits. The proposed debt limit is fifty million dollars. With a fifty mil levy proposed, the cap is also proposed to be fifty mils. The applicant's financial plan finds sufficient property tax and other revenues to discharge of the proposed indebtedness, and the light industrial and employment center development is called Nexus North at DIA. The applicant intends to create an employment center that can accommodate a wide variety of uses, and it's important to point out that no residential development is proposed, so this metro district will not include any homes. So here's the proposed metro district. So they have noted thirty million in improvements, with a proposed fifty million debt limit and total capacity, with organizing and operating expenses at a hundred thousand and fifty thousand. To approve this service plan, council must find that the service plan includes all the required contents, and then there's four criteria for approval. The development review team found that the service plan does include all the items required and meets council's goal of providing a developed, balanced economy to improve socioeconomic status by providing a mix of land uses. With that, the development review team recommends the city council approve the proposed service plan and the associated IGA for Nexus North at DIA. And staff would be happy to answer any questions you have at this time, and representatives for the metro district are also available.
Thank you. Is there anyone on council that has any questions for the staff at this time? Mr. Madera?
I had a question about the bond proceeds. So it looks like there's forty-two-point-five million that's going to be withdrawn, when the project funds is going to be around thirty-one million. Can you speak to that other ten million and what that's for?
I think the applicant will be better able to address that question. So if you don't mind, I'm going to defer to them.
Wait, when, I'll ask you to, to have comments and questions for the applicant here in a minute. Go ahead. Mr. Hughesman.
Counselman Madera, page four of the financial plan that is in our package shows that approximately thirty-one million dollars for the project fund, a capitalized interest fund of six-point-three million, and a debt service reserve fund of three-point-eight million takes it up to forty-two million, five-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars.
Right, and I just wanted to get a little more explanation on what those capitalized funds are for, and so people out there can get a better understanding of how these debt proceeds are going to be used.
All right. Any other questions for our staff? Seeing none, I'd ask the applicant to please come forward. Add anything additional to the presentation from our staff?
Good evening. My name is Brock Chapman with Shuck Communities, located at two North Cascade Avenue, Suite twelve-eighty, Colorado Springs, eight-zero-nine-zero-three. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I know this is pretty straightforward stuff, and I'll just hit a couple of important highlights, and then we can expand on the question you had, as well as some additional questions. Before I move on, I want to introduce, and she'll introduce herself for the record, but Elizabeth Cortez from the McGee DeBecker Law Firm is our district council. She's here to answer the tough stuff, as I'll refer to it as. A couple of quick items for you, and then we can answer questions. I wanted just to point out some important considerations for you, that the service plan being considered tonight is consistent with the Nexus North PUD that you all approved two weeks ago and then had the final reading on tonight. The boundaries of our district do match the property and project boundaries. They don't go outside that or, or, or include any other properties. As Ms. Axmaker said, there is no residential within this district and, or within the property anywhere. All future property owners within the district are what we would consider sophisticated corporate entities and are used to these type of financial considerations. In addition to the capital investment and the maintenance this district has with all standard districts, this district also has architectural review services and approvals and covenant enforcement. So that's an additional service this district provides for this project. The service plan and the IGA are based on the Commerce City standard, what I would consider the standard model service plan. And the Metro District Service Plan and IGA are similar to the previous district you all approved a couple of years ago for the other project we developed just to the south of this, Nexus at DIA. So these are very consistent districts, even though they're two separate districts. And as far as Metro District Service Plans go for commercial developments, this one's pretty straightforward with the addition of the architectural review and covenant enforcement services it provides. I think I'll leave it at that. I, you know, I do thank you for your time and consideration tonight. I would appreciate your vote to approve this plan to be the final step we need in the entitlements to get into more site-specific uses. And I think I'm going to ask Ms. Cortez to address the more detailed information, even though it was recapped nicely by one of the other council members.
Great, thank you. Come on up.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Cortez. Address is four-fifty East Seventeenth Avenue, Suite four-hundred, Denver, Colorado, eight-zero-two-zero-three. That's with the law firm of McGee DeBecker. To answer specifically your question, the bond proceeds will all go towards the public improvement. So no private improvements are included in that. So it's all the roads, streets, sewer, water, public space, open space. Those types of items are all what is included in that.
Go ahead.
So I guess my question was, you know, the estimate per the service plan was thirty million for capital improvements, but we have six-point-four million for capitalized interest fund and three-point-nine million for debt service reserve fund. So that's almost a third of the capital improvement funds that are needed. What's the additional withdrawal for?
So the, the capitalized, are you asking what the capitalized interest and the surplus fund are for?
Yeah, and how those will be used.
So that is, that's projected, that's an anticipated plan. So the feasibility of the district is that that's the number that it can support. The district can only issue the amount of debt necessary to pay for the verified costs at the time of the issuance, so what's actually been spent. So the capitalized interest is to cover the lapse in time, depending on when the issuance is made, between being able to have that revenue to come through to pay the interest on the bonds. The bondholders require that we hold back capitalized interest. And the surplus fund is, if there are anticipated improvements to be made after the issuance that have not been spent yet, it's held, it can be held in a surplus fund. You can also have surplus funds to, almost like a reserve fund, to make sure that payments are being made in a period of time where the revenue coming in might not be enough to cover the amortization of the schedule.
Right. Thank you.
But again, they can only issue what they can afford to issue at the time.
All right, are there any other questions for the applicant at this time? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on the matter of this Nexus North at DIA Metro District? Seeing no one. All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Open for a motion on Resolution twenty nineteen dash nineteen. Mr. Hughesman.
Make a motion to approve Resolution two-zero-one-nine dash one-nineteen, or, excuse me, dash one-nine.
And Mr. Davis?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. To approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash nineteen, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the attorney read the title?
Resolution twenty nineteen dash one-nine, resolution approving the Nexus North at DIA Metropolitan District Service Plan and the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Commerce City and the, the Nexus North at DIA Metropolitan District in case MD one-oh-eight-one-nine.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item, conditional use permit CU dash one-two-one dash A-one, or, I'm sorry, A-one Organics property located at nine-one-oh-nine Monaco Street. Want to remind the council to use the public hearing portion to ask questions, but wait until the public hearing is closed to express an opinion or indicate how you will vote. I'm going to open the public hearing. There has been a request for continuance. The applicant has requested that the public hearing and council decision be continued to May sixth. Council can consider that request before the staff and the applicant and members of the public speak. The applicant does have a written submission into the record to make that request for continuance. So if the council wishes to continue, we can do that. If the council does not wish to continue, we can also do that. Now, there's a lot of folks here tonight to speak on this matter, but I want to invite the applicant forward to offer that written submission into record and make their request for that continuance.
Good evening. My name's Erin Veneras, five-four-oh-seven South Oneida Way. I'm representing A-one in this matter, A-one Organics. We are requesting a continuance largely because we have submitted, as of last Wednesday, a very comprehensive set of materials that we'd like this council to review and consider before deciding on this matter. It comprises a twenty-two-page brief or submission detailing the history of this facility and communications between A-one and the city concerning the use of the facility and the pile heights, which is what this conditional use application is about. And in addition, it contains about twenty-seven exhibits that are referenced in the submission that we would like the council, again, to consider before hearing testimony and presentation on this matter. Secondly, we would also like the property owner, the landlord, to be present at this hearing when the council considers this matter, so that they can also give testimony and express their point of view on this. And if possible, Deputy City Planner Roger Tinklenberg, who has had many communications with A-one about this matter, and the A-one believes that's pertinent to this council's consideration. So if the council is inclined to grant the continuance, we would make this information, it has been provided to the city, but I don't think it's been provided to all of you, given that your packets, I think, were put together a week ago today. But we've brought hard copies, several boxes of them, and each of you will have a copy during our presentation, which you can cross-reference hopefully as we go through. I just don't know that it would be that meaningful without you having had the opportunity to review it in advance.
Thank you. I do have a question of our staff, primarily our legal council. If we're going to incorporate new testimony at the, at this level, should this not be reconsidered by the planning commission? If there's new testimony outside of what they originally heard, based on the recommendations they're sending forward? I don't want to take this out of order if that be the case from a legal perspective, but I'm...
It would not necessarily be required to send this back to the planning commission. I don't believe it is a common practice, if ever, to return things to the planning commission. The first matter I would like, before the record gets confused, is to ask if the applicant wanted to formally introduce written materials into the record during the public hearing here.
Sure. I'll go to that here in just, just a second. I want to make sure they have the opportunity to do that.
But the city council certainly does not need the planning commission to review this, any additional materials. That's why the plan, the city council would conduct its own public hearing on this matter.
I understand that. And I also understand that there was a public hearing conducted by the planning commission. But to have the desire for continuance based on additional new evidence, that's not normal in our public hearing procedures either, that we would get that kind of new, new information. So I just want, I want to make sure the council realizes that you, you have seated a planning commission to bring you information and request you to consider their recommendations. And if there's additional new testimony, and I know Councilwoman Frank also has served on the planning commission in the past, and so have I, that I want to consider our planning commission from the fact that we would be considering something that would be more than what they had considered to begin with. Not that I want them to by any means change their opinion, but I want them to at least have the same information as us. So I want to make sure that the council also understands that we not only have the right to continue this, we have the right to kick it back to the planning commission to receive the additional information that we are receiving tonight, or that we'll receive for the upcoming hearing. And I don't want to circumvent our planning commission and have them go, well, really? You got new information and you didn't, you didn't consider to let us have that information concerning the hearing you're about to receive. And hopefully you all understand why I took this pause to mention that, because I think the council has a few different options here. First and foremost, I think that we need to allow the applicant to ask to produce some documents that apparently they want to produce tonight for the record. But secondly, I think you have the opportunity to continue, not continue, or to kick it back to the planning commission to have the opportunity to review the additional information that we're about to receive. So I'll make that clear to the council, so that if, when that motion's made, you all have the opportunity to make a decision on how you would like this to roll out. Now, I'd like to go back to the city attorneys piece on allowing the applicant to make some documents for the record. Go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted the, the record to formally reflect the introduction. The mere submission of information to staff, as we've indicated, the applicant is not sufficient. And so just to have that statement formally- And so, just to have that statement formally, that that's being offered for the record and introduced in the public hearing.
Right. Thank you. So, for the record, we'll have it reflect the new information that is being brought forward for the testimony, for the hearing. And that would, that should take care of your request. Is that correct?
I apologize, I'm sorry.
So, that should take care of the public record, that new testimony is being introduced, and that you have formally requested a continuance to May 6th.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, questions of the, the staff? Of staff and the applicant? Well, let's stick with the staff until we get to the point where we're in, where we're seeing a presentation and having to have discussion on this case, because as of right now, I don't know if the council wants to continue it, not continue it. And so, I'll allow you to ask questions to the staff. Mr. Hughesman?
Am I correct in seeing that this was heard by the planning commission on February 5th? Yes. And how long have we had the documents that were just presented to you?
Just now.
It's my understanding that these were submitted on Wednesday to staff last week, but were not submitted in the planning commission or in the application process.
Okay, so approximately seven weeks from the time of the planning commission. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of our staff at this time? Mr. Teeter?
No questions, I'd like to make a motion.
All right, go right ahead.
I'd like to continue the public hearing on CU 121 to the city council meeting on May 6th.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I've got a lot of lights lit up here, so if you were making the motion or the second, you don't have discussion, take your lights off. Mr. Wardiola?
I'd like to ask...
Remember, there is a motion and a second on the floor, we have to be about this time.
Right, I'd like to ask the motion maker if we can amend that, to send these documents to the planning commission, for they can re-review it and then come back to us.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes, that would be a great idea. I think they should have, at least have the opportunity to read the same material we're gonna read, if they so desire.
All right. So, is the motion maker gonna amend the motion to send this back to the planning commission with the new information provided?
Yes.
Is that acceptable to the second?
Yes.
Mayor Ford?
Yes, sir.
May, may it clear was the intention that the matter then returned to the city council for a public hearing on May 6th?
Well, here's part of the problem. I have a motion, and that's why I'm trying to settle this. I have a motion to continue this to the May 6th city council meeting. I have amendment, a requested amendment, an approved amendment from the motion maker to send this back to the planning commission, which would negate the May 6th request. It would, it would send it back to planning commission. Is the motion maker and the second aware of that?
Yes, and that's a good point. Obviously, if we're gonna send it back to planning commission, we should be looking at a different date.
Thank you. And the second, apparently aware of that?
Yes, Mayor.
To the attorney. I'm sorry, sir, I have to wait until I get this settled. We can't go to any public comment at this point. Go ahead.
For clarity's sake, the withdrawal of the motion, and then if the desire is to send it to planning commission, of the motion maker, to withdraw that motion and not vote on it, because once planning commission were to reconsider it, if that's the direction, it would then come back to council as a matter of course, following that recommendation, so...
All right, so the, the attorney says, what we need to do is have you remove your motion, redact it, and, and the second, to be able to make a new motion to consider sending this back to planning commission.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to remove my original motion in our addition of this hearing on CU 121.
Thank you. And the second?
Second, Mayor.
Okay. Now, I'm open for a new motion, Mr. Teeter.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to send this back to the planning commission, if they so desire to review it, if, and let staff come up with a date, we need to continue this discussion.
And it'll come automatically from the planning commission?
Yes.
Is there a second, Mr. Davis?
I'll second that.
All right, so now I have a motion and a second to send this back to planning commission to have the new information reviewed and sent forward, their recommendation based on the same information that we will be receiving. All right? All those in favor?
About discussion?
Yeah, sure, discussion, we're still in discussion. Go ahead. Mr. Hughesman, go right ahead.
Thank you. I am opposed to continuing this. I think that the applicant has had ample opportunity from February 5th to put forth any documents that they wanted. I think that the residents who have shown up this evening have taken time out of their lives to come here and talk on this matter. They've done so before, and to think that they have to make two other trips down here in order to speak on this matter is not fair to them. So, I am vehemently opposed to the idea of continuing this. I feel that the matter should be heard now, based on the recommendations of the planning commission. It is the applicant's responsibility to provide all documents to both the planning commission and the council ahead of time before it gets to there, as well as the fact that the applicant isn't even here, the landowner isn't here, and the land use owner isn't here and wants it to be continued so that they can be here, that is unacceptable. They should have been here.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Counsel, may I be heard?
No, not right now, sorry. Is there any other discussion? I have a motion on the floor, ma'am, I can't take any testimony or any, any discussion from the audience at this time. Mr. Davis?
Just let me clarify, I, I agree. I think that the folks I'm looking at here, obviously, I'm here and have a lot of questions. And I have a lot of questions too, don't get me wrong. But I also, when, when someone is, is going to supply me with more information, I, I want to research that and see exactly what they have in there before I, I make a decision. It may be, it may be a, an important decision that I have to make, but I, I applaud everyone for being here, and I, I agree with Mr. Hughesman. I think it's a, a, an injustice for, for them to, to not be here. But I, I'm research-driven, and I need, if there's more information out there, right, wrong, or indifferent, I want to read it first. Depending on, on who's side brings it, I want to make sure I can make that decision in a fair and impartial way.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Also, we did, Commerce City Council and Planning Commission did approve this location for this company back in the time that it was approved. And if there is, we felt then that it was a good location for them and a good project for us, so I think we owe it to them to hear the whole side of the story. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Saying none, I have a motion and a second on the floor to send this back to the planning commission for review of the additional information before it gets brought forward to the city council level for this public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right.
Can we, can we either get a verbal or do a roll call?
Yeah, let's do, do a roll call.
The motion is to... Yes, to send it back?
You're all set.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Ford, Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
I need you to push the button.
Oh, push the button, I got you.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter? Thank you.
Looks like it goes back to the planning commission. Five in favor, three opposed. Next item.
And just for purposes of clarity with that motion, just if the public hearing would be formally closed at that point by the city council?
Yep, correct. Thank you, Mr. Turn. All right. Ordinance is on first reading. Ordinance 2202-lease of Equipment from Deer Credit, Inc. Does anyone on council have any questions? Mr. Madera?
Yeah, so, my question was just, it looks like it's a three-year lease, and it's a little over 50% of the cost that it would be to buy these machines. So, I guess I just wanted a little more clarity from staff as the advantages to leasing this machinery rather than purchasing it, because to me, I think, you know, the life on these machines is probably, I don't know, you know them better than I do, anticipating, you know, 10 years or more?
This is equipment that's used heavily, it's used multiple times a week, and especially during snow season, some of the equipment is used as the main source of loading all the, the ice slicer into the trucks. Where the, the equipment's currently being leased, and by getting new equipment every three years, we'll make sure we cut down on the amount of maintenance that's required on the, on the equipment, and we'll get new equipment on a regular basis. So, it's, it's somewhat in line with the, the vehicle lease program that council has already approved last year, so that's what, that's where we're looking at. The equipment leases are also coming up this year, they, they would expire. So, the, the options that we would have is to enter into a, a lease now to release and get new equipment, or to come up with just under $700,000 for new equipment, which is not currently in the buzzet.
Anything else there, Mr. Madera?
No, I just wanted to know the reasoning behind going with the lease rather than purchasing.
Mr. Hughesman?
Thank you, Mayor. Did we receive quotes from any other people, the possibility of leasing equipment that maybe doesn't have a shiny green emblem on it?
No, I did not receive quotes by any other vendors. What I did was I went through the Sourcewell Collaborative Purchase Agreement, which I'm sure council members are familiar with how that process works, but it's large municipalities join together, or do it by themselves. They go through the procurement process and then make that available to other municipalities around the country to participate using that pricing. These collaborative purchase groups, Sourcewell is a very large one and very well-known. The companies that are awarded contracts through them know that by providing high-quality pricing, that they're more, they're very likely to get a significant more amount of business than they would get by just providing the pricing to that one municipality that, that put out the procurement. So, that's, that's what we've gone through. The equipment that we have is currently through John Deere, and it's been serving us very well. So, for those reasons, that's why I went with the John Deere equipment again.
Follow-up. Is the vendor located in Commerce City?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion, if I can, Mayor.
Is there any, no other questions regarding this ordinance before I allow a motion? Go right ahead, Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2202, council seated on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Hughesman?
Second a motion.
I have a motion and a second. To introduce ordinance 22-dash, or 2202. All those, let's see, roll call, vote please.
I will, may I read the title?
Yeah, you can if you want.
Ordinance 2202, An Ordinance Authorizing a Lease of Equipment in the Execution by the City of a Mass Release Agreement with Deer Credit, Inc. and Related Documents Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Related Schedules, Setting Fourth Parameters and Restrictions, and Providing for Other Related Matters.
Thank you. I was trying to skip a few of those readings. Roll call, vote please. For the record, ordinance 2202 is introduced unanimously this evening, one absent, Mr. Douglas. Next, we have ordinance 2207, which is Land Development Code Amendments for Off-Street Parking Requirements. None of this, which includes residential. Is there anyone on council who has any questions? Hughesman? Teeter?
Yes, Mayor, I have no questions, but I'll make a motion.
Well, I'm at, let me go through the questions first. No question? Anyone else on council have a question? Is there anyone in the audience who has a question regarding this ordinance? Saying none? I'm open for a motion, Mr. Teeter.
Yes, I'd like to also approve ordinance 2207, LD Amendment of the Off-Street Parking Requirements. Council is seated on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
A motion and a second, with the city attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance 2207, An Ordinance Amending Section 21-7238 of the Land Development Code, Providing for Minor Modifications Relating to Off-Street Parking Requirements.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2207 has been unanimously introduced this evening, one, excuse the absence, Mr. Douglas. Moves us into administrative council business. Mr. McBroom, would you like to take care of your oil and gas presentation at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are fortunate to have a representative from the South Adams County Fire Department, and Mr. Kramer is Brighton representative as well? Mr. Kramer is the Brighton Fire Department representative?
Yes, I'm sorry, the Brighton, I did not hear that. My apologies. Yes, Brighton Fire District is also here.
So, we're fortunate to have representatives from both organizations to talk to us about their involvement in potential oil and gas development in the community. Mr. Kramer, were there other introductory remarks you had?
Come on up, guys, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, city council. My name is Randall Wiggum, Division Chief of Fire Prevention with South Adams County Fire. I have with me Deputy Chief Michael Shupi from Brighton Fire and Deputy Chief Bob Manzingo from South Adams County Fire. So, what we're gonna talk today is kind of what we're doing as far as oil and gas development in Commerce City. So, right now, we're doing well drill and pad site familiarization training, we're planning for emergency response exercises, and we're discussing specialized training assistance that's, that's needed for these types of emergencies. So, we're doing discussions on ongoing equipment that will be necessary for response, and we're determining regional resource and response guidelines in the north metro area. So, risk management and emergency response plans, so the risk management and emergency response plans will be developed in accordance with the Commerce City's, City's best management practices and the adopted fire code. And then, the emergency response plans will be required for review, comment, and approval by both fire districts prior to drilling activities. And this also includes the emergency evacuation plan, so those will be done when the permits come in, and it'll be site-specific. So, that's what we've been working on, is an overview, and I'll open it up to any, any questions you have.
I'm glad that you, you guys came in tonight. We've been trying to meet with all of our government authorities that are gonna have to deal with oil and gas in one fashion or another, and some of the comments that we've received is that you guys aren't ready for this, and we haven't seen an evacuation plan and things of that nature. But we haven't seen any permits yet either. So, when a permit does come in and is vetted through our best management practices, that's the time you guys will develop those evacuation plans and, and how you will respond.
That, that is correct, yes.
Thank you. At least that helps lay out timing and how that process will take place for those evacuation plans, because it's tough when you have residents come in and go, "You can't do this, because we don't have an evacuation plan." It's because we don't have any permits. And I look forward to the fire districts, and, and I'm glad that Brighton's here as well, to be able to have the collaborative effort of both having some oversight on what the health and safety and well-being for our residents will be, given, given when and if there are any oil and gas operations that take place within our jurisdictions. So, thank you. Is there any other, there, there are some more questions. Let's go with Councilwoman Frank.
We had a question from one of our residents that was asking how many volunteer and how many full-time firefighters you have?
We're currently up to, right at 60 career firefighters and about a dozen reserve or volunteers.
And that's for the Commerce City?
Great.
What's Brighton's?
For Brighton Fire Rescue, we have 65 career and no reserve or volunteers.
All right, that, that's a... All right, that's an important distinction for Councilwoman Frank because of how, what do you guys call it when, where you overlap?
On Medicaid.
Right? Correct. So let's go to Mr. Teeter.
Yes, thanks, gentlemen, for coming in tonight. For the public out there, I have total confidence in this fire department. South Adams, for sure, that's where I was at for thirty-four years. These people are trained to handle these kind of fires. They do yearly training at the refineries over here and each, each fire is a little different and they will have to figure out what the approach is gonna be, but they have the ability to get it under control and stop it at a reasonable amount of times.
Thank you. Mr. Wardiola?
Thank you, Mayor. Have you guys met with any residents or the industry during this stuff?
We did meet with some residents up at the open house at Buffalo Ridge and then we've also met with extraction oil and gas during our conversations, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Davis?
Evening, guys. Thank you for everything you do and your service. Here's a large oil well pad up there off, I think it's one hundred and thirty-sixth, right off I-76th. You know which one I'm talking about?
Hundred and thirty-second.
Yeah, that'd be in our fire prediction district.
Have you had any response to that? Have you had any calls to that?
We have not. They're still currently under production, so.
Okay, but no incidents there?
We have not, no. We've done site visits out there. As we talked about, you know, some of that pre-planning that we've done and included South Adams coming up to that because they would be part of our, called our first response into that area.
About any other sites in your, in your district that you know, any response?
So we've had a couple of, I'll call them fires in our response district, more in the Weld County side of things.
Okay.
On some separator fires.
Okay.
But that was in 2017 that we've had those, so.
And you're responding, you're fully equipped to respond to those?
Correct, yeah.
And take care of it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for being here this evening. I think it's imperative for the audience and residents at home to see that this is something that is, is in process and it's going to continue to progress as we receive these applications. And so I think it's, I think it's good to, good practice to have both fire districts represented here this evening to kinda educate the community. But first and foremost, thank you so much for everything that you do for our residents. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
All right, I would just close by again thanking you all for being here. We have faith in your abilities. I would like to say though that Commerce City has been doing these speaker series. I would like to make sure that you guys have opportunity, are they on the line, Brian? The different ones? So we have Colorado Department of Health, the Army, I mean, there's a whole bunch of different speakers that, that we have reached out to for the agencies that are represented in the area where oil and gas operations may take place. We would just wanna make sure that our residents know we're reaching out to all of our agencies, working closely with those agencies. And if you guys see something that, that you have questions about, please bring it to our attention so that we know that we are communicating the best fashion that we can. So thanks again for coming in tonight and we may ask you to come back at another time when things start to heat up and we need the fire department.
Anytime.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Good evening.
It worked out perfect for me. All righty. Mr., we're gonna, we're gonna get back into administrative council business. Thank you to the fire districts, both of them. There are a few things that we need to take up during administrative council business. First, hopefully you all have had a chance to look at the funding request for the Metro Mayor's Caucus Homeless Initiative. A few years ago, I came to you and, and asked you to put some money towards the Metro Mayor's effort for crock pot opportunities. We're doing crock pots to get homeless folks off the street into motels, having the ability to cook their own food and get them a fresh start. Metro Mayor's Caucus is now asking to update their ability on, on contributions. There's a list, you can see all the different jurisdictions that have made donations and, and when. Lone Trees at a thousand, Wheat Ridge is at fifteen hundred for this year. Sheridan is five hundred, Littleton's a thousand, Lakewood's twenty-five hundred, Golden's twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred. And when we did participate, we participated at the, in 2015 at three thousand dollar level. And so we're trying to, as the Metro Mayors, rebuild that fund. Is there any direction from the council on what you would like to make the motion to give towards this venture for the Metro Mayor's Caucus? Mr. Huesman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we give three thousand dollars to the Metro Mayor Caucus for the purpose of homelessness.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Wardiola?
Second that motion.
A motion of second to do three thousand dollar donation to Metro Mayor's Fund for the Homeless Initiative. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And thank you for that. It's important to be at the table from a regional perspective. Next, I do wanna go over two items. I'm gonna have Troy bring them up individually. One of them is for Metro Mayors on our position on a bill and then another one is on NADA, on our position on a bill. So Troy, why don't you lead us off with the first one for Metro Mayors?
Thank you, Mayor. Metro Mayors has asked for consensus question, essentially wanting Metro Mayor's Caucus to represent all the mayors in the metro area with respect to House Bill nineteen-one-two-two-eight, which is about the Affordable House Housing Tax Credit. That bill is summarized on your weekly legislative report and previously the council has taken a position to monitor that bill. This request would be for you to support that bill for the consensus question. In, in essence, the summary indicates that it takes the CHAFA tax credit from the amount of five million dollars annually and increases the aggregate cap to ten million dollars between the years 2020 and 2024. Your legislative lobbyists has indicated that there is strong support for this bill at the Capitol from both municipalities and those Affordable Housing Coalitions and recommend your support.
All right, is there any discussion on changing our position on the bill that has been spelled out? Saying no discussion. Hard to change our mind if I don't have anybody wants to talk. So I guess since nobody has an interest on changing our position on the bill, it stays at opposed.
That one's a monitor, so we'll keep the council's position at monitor.
Stays at monitor. The next one's the opposed one. Uh, Mr. Hughes, uh, Mr. Hughes is first and I'm going to, Mr. Wardiola? All right. What's that?
I thought you just wanted discussion. Do we have to make a motion to change our position or, I thought the discussion came after?
No. So what happens is after he spelled out what, what is requested, Metro Mayors is requesting support for the bill that Troy just laid out for us. We are the only, no, not this, again, the other, ah, thanks Troy. Steve, just keep with the hand signals. Right now, we're monitor. Metro Mayor's Caucus is looking for support because it does incorporate the HETF funding stream that will benefit Commerce City from the perspective of transportation.
Mr. Bill, Mr. Mayor, that's the other, the other bill. This is a affordable. But we talked about two of them earlier, so.
Could we, could we send it back to the legislative committee?
Uh, you can't send it back to the legislative committee. The only, the only downside to that is the reason that it's coming up tonight.
I think I'm gonna hear it.
Because Metro Mayors, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Metro Mayors reached out to Troy and they would like to have a response prior to Wednesday's Metro Mayor's meeting as to where Commerce City stands on it because we're currently monitored and they are requesting support for the, the housing bill. Mr. Huesman?
I'd like to make a motion that we change the city's official position on this bill for a monitor to support.
All right, so I do have a motion now to no longer monitor but to support. Let me go to Mr. Teeter.
I will second that motion.
A motion of second to support that bill. Is there any discussion before I call that vote? Mr. Huesman?
Do we need to let the Colorado Sun know that we're changing our position?
No, I think they'll change it for us. Right? I shouldn't say that. With that said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried and that'll give Mr. Smith a little relief on Wednesday. All right. Next one is a bill NADA is requesting us through Rick, who's our member on NADA, is requesting us to change our position from opposed to support. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Teeter to tell you why.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I attended the meeting Thursday morning along with the Councilwoman Frank and our representative from staff, Mr. Joe Wilson. We, we did vote the way that we were, we talked about during our executive sessions with, with our bills.
Yeah, not exec, don't say executive.
You're right, you're right.
Mayor, it's legislative.
Legislative, there we go. So I would like to turn this over to Mr. Smith to see, give us an update on this.
All right, I just want to, for the record, make sure everybody realizes there's
Yes.
No executive session that we're considering our legislative directions. Mr. Smith, please. Thank you, Mayor. There's two bills here, House Bill twelve fifty-seven and House Bill twelve fifty-eight. These both came before the City Council Legislative Subcommittee, not in an executive session last week, for consideration. And the bill states that the funding, this is a statewide Tabor question, if you will recall. The bill would place a referendum on the ballot known as referendum C for voters to, to decide if excess Tabor revenue could be used in three different ways. One-third of any revenue excess would be dedicated to public schools. That money would go on a pure pupil basis for, for funding for one-time expenditures. Another third of that money would go to higher education and the final third would be dedicated from the state treasurer to HETF and it would be allocated in the same funding allocation the way HETF dollars we currently receive would be allocated. There's some additional language in the bill summary that's provided with respect to the amount of money that could be used specifically for highways. The request is again from NADA for the city council to consider whether it wants to maintain its position of opposing this bill or change its position to support, given the local funding that could become available through this excess revenue from the state.
Mr. Huesman?
Thank you, Mayor. I initially opposed this legislation because part of that Tabor refund has been used in the past to fund the senior citizen property tax exemption, but it's been brought to my attention that there are other revenue streams in order to fund that. Additionally, I was opposed to the fact that we just had buckets of money to put it in without actually having clear-cut definition of what that money would go towards and based on the definition that Deputy City Manager Smith has provided this evening, I'd like to make a motion that we reverse our position from opposing this to supporting it.
Mr. Madera?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there any discussion before I move on? Saying none. A motion of second to change our position to support on the transportation that it's the tax, say it again, Troy.
This is a statewide Tabor question that would place Tabor excess revenue into three different funding streams.
I just wanted that to be part of the motion. All right, with that said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All right. That takes care of the administrative council business I had. Is there any other administrative council business that the city council has that they'd like to bring? Councilwoman Frank?
So I received a call on Thursday from Dee with the Federal Railroad Authority. They, oops, I had this pulled up, sorry. They are having a listening session on Friday, April twenty-sixth that she's invited me to attend along with one other representative from the city. So I was hoping that I could get approval to attend that and find out who the council would like to suggest that we bring. But essentially, the, the listening session is to identify existing and emerging technology designed and used to mitigate, reduce, and ultimately eliminate railroad grade crossing collisions. The purpose is also to capture technology ideas, problem-solving solutions generated from railroad industry and government officials. I think this could be, you know, a big, a, a big thing for Commerce City, especially with our infra grant that we have in. And also hopefully to continue those relationships with FRA. They're inviting ten municipalities from across the country and we are one of ten. So I think it's important.
Where's it gonna be located?
Um, it is at their office in DC and it's a one-day, just a one-day meeting.
I'd ask, I don't want you to end up going to Hawaii and have residents ask me why we let you go there for a train meeting.
Yes, it's in Hawaii.
So I have, I have a request from Councilwoman Frank to allow her to go back to the FRA for a listening session on improving relationships with our railroads. It's open for two?
Yeah, we, I can bring one more. Yes.
So if there's another person that has an interest in going, that would be the time to let us know. Mr. Teeter, you wanna go?
No, I'm gonna put this up here. Couldn't that possibly be staff that might be the person to send a second with her?
Well, maybe, but I gotta see if a council member wants to go first.
That's right.
Mr. Huesman, do you wanna go?
I, I'm open to going, but I just wanna make sure that whoever goes to accompany Councilwoman Frank is the person that can get the most out of it. So if there's somebody at staff that is probably better suited for this, then I'm all for a person to staff going. If not, then I'm more than happy to go. I know railroads has been a sticky issue ever since I've lived in Commerce City and will continue to be so, will be so as long as I do live in Commerce City. I'd love to be involved, but if there's somebody more important or more suited, then please by all means take that. But I would like to make a motion that Councilwoman Frank and whoever her guest is, go on this trip.
All right, so I have a motion to allow Councilman Frank and one additional representative of Commerce City the opportunity to go for a one-day listening session to meet with the FRA concerning our, our train issues. Is there a second to that? Mr. Wardiola?
I'll second that.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Saying none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Mr. Huesman?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two motions that I would like to make this evening. The first motion deals with an interesting story. I saw on the news recently that there is a grant out there that has provided washers and dryers in five different schools for the purpose of ensuring that kids who don't necessarily have the means to clean their clothes and do laundry at home are able to still go to school because they're not embarrassed for clean clothing. So I'd like to make a motion that city staff reach out to both Adams fourteen as well as Brighton twenty-seven J and C about the feasibility of providing such amenities in both Prairie View and Adam City High School and Prairie View and Adam City Middle School for the purpose of making sure that kids are not despondent and able to go to school because they have clean clothes.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. I got four lights lit up. Councilwoman Frank?
I'll second that motion.
A motion of second. I would like to ask the motion maker to consider also including Kearney Middle School in that.
My apologies, Kearney Middle School as well.
All right, is that acceptable as a second?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wardiola?
Also to include Lester Arnold.
Also to include Lester Arnold High School.
Thank you.
Sometimes where all our different students, but Lester Arnold had some challenging students that will benefit from that.
Is that amenable to the motion maker?
I'm just gonna amend it by saying any high school or middle school that Commerce City students go to.
Even better. Is that amenable to the second?
Yes, it is.
Alright, any other discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Mr. Huesman?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been busy down at the State Capitol and much to my chagrin, they have recently passed a, what they call the Red Flag Bill, which is the Extreme Risk Protective Order Bill. It's recently come to my attention that that bill has language in it that prevents the residents from, of Colorado from petitioning it, similar to the manner in which they are petitioning the National Vote, Popular Vote Bill. I would like to make a motion that staff draft an ordinance declaring Commerce City as a sanctuary city for firearms. At the same time, a motion to have an ordinance that says the Commerce City Police Department will not use resources to enforce any ERPO measure brought before them.
I have a motion. I would ask the motion maker, most of the stuff I've seen have been resolutions by all the different counties and cities that have taken this up.
Sorry, resolution would be fine on the one, but I would defer to the city attorney on whether or not the part barring the police department from enforcing this law would need to be a resolution or an ordinance.
So my, this would be directing staff to draft said resolution and to consider said ordinance to bring back any concerns legally that we would have. However, I'd like to take them individually. The reason I wanna take them individually is because until I get legal advice on the one, I wanna wait until I have that legal advice. On the other one, I'm prepared to vote tonight to direct staff to draft that resolution. Is that acceptable to you, to do them individually? Okay?
As
Go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
I was gonna say, as to the appropriate vehicle, we could research which would be the, the most appropriate way to accomplish the intent. Whether it be an ordinance or a resolution ordinance is requiring two readings and to see if it would modify any provision of the code and to research other ancillary legal issues associated with the request. So it could just be, it'll be ordinance or resolution, however, would be the best way to accomplish your intent, if that's okay.
Alright, so why don't you make the motion on the first one then?
Okay, motion on the first one is to draft a resolution declaring Commerce City as a sanctuary city for firearms, similar to what a majority, not a majority, but several counties in Colorado have done, as well as other cities have considered.
Thank you. A motion on the floor, is there a second? Councilwoman Frank?
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? Madera?
Yeah, I can't support just going straight into a resolution with this without first researching any liability that the city could have and so I would rather have our staff look into the issue, bring back any possible issues with going through with this and, you know, while I'm not in favor of this bill and there's definitely a lot that's wrong as it's written, I don't think it's our position to, you know, jump to the end conclusion without taking in all the facts and knowing what we're getting into first.
Thank you. I do have some discussion myself. You know, I've done a lot of research on this and I think it's appropriate for our council to have the information that they're asking for and I think that the motion on the floor is just to dra-, just to direct staff to draft said resolution. We do have time with the study session in between, the opportunity to see that resolution to get additional information so that people like Mr. Madera would have that additional information. However, I do see this as be, being an infringement upon the constitutional rights of our residents as does the re-, the City Council in Milliken and many other cities in Colorado and several counties. So I will be supportive of the request to have the staff draft that resolution and we can take up some discussion during our study session if necessary, before it comes to us to get those questions answered. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Wadiola?
Where I don't support this bill, I do believe that some of us are research-based and I'd like the staff to come back with the research instead of taking a position, which we'll be doing right now if we do vote for it. So I won't be voting for it until we get some research on it.
Alright, any other discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Alright, let's have a roll call, please. Staff will draft a resolution and bring back information regarding liability to answer any questions. Alright, Mr. Huesman, you had another one?
Yes, I would like the staff to make a motion for the staff to draft a resolution that we can also discuss in a study session when we discuss the previous resolution that would ban or prohibit the police department from being able to expend resources for the use of enforcing a extreme risk protection order.
Is there a second? I'll ask one more time, is there a second? Councilwoman Frank?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, is there a discussion?
I got a discussion.
Mr. Davis?
Although I'm opposed vehemently against this bill, I, I don't know if we can tell our chief of police that he can't enforce laws. And I'm sworn to not only protect this town against lawsuits, I think that in doing so, that will put his, his job in risk as well without looking at this bill truly for what it is until it's actually signed. I don't know how our chief feels, well, about this particular motion on the floor, but I know how I feel about it, but I'm, as a city councilman, I mean, I have to weigh the, the fact of what's gonna happen if we instruct our chief of police not to obey the law.
I don't disagree. I think there's, I think there's definitely some questions we have here. Number one, we have an obligation to uphold the law. Part of our oath is to uphold the state and federal laws that are in place. However, there's also an article that says that if it's unconstitutional law that's put into place, that it's not actually a law. And so I think that we need some legal advice on this front. So I am all supportive of getting that resolution that we passed a minute ago before the council and the questions answered because this one is a little bit more legality and we need direction from legal counsel concerning what we can and can't do and how, how this would have to be worded or, and/or drafted, as well as to engage our chief of police in this discussion. I think would, would be best for me to see this in a study session to have that discussion. So with that said, is there any other discussion? Mr. Madera?
And I know, you know, a lot of us question the constitutionality of this legislation, but at the same time, I'd like to remind everyone that it's not our job to determine what's constitutional, that's what the courts are for and that gets settled in the judicial system. So, you know, a lot of times we do have to set our personal interests aside and look at what's best and, well, I think that this bill's gonna put officers' lives in danger and there's a whole lot wrong with it. At the same time, I know that it's not our place to tell our officer not to uphold the laws because that puts them in a tough spot as it is, so I'd like to see more information come forward and talk with our chief and the police officers' union as well.
I would agree. I will be voting against this one, but I would support direction to bring it to a study session for further information.
Absolutely.
So the motion maker has questions, Mr. Huesman?
I'd actually like to withdraw that motion and make a new motion that we have a study session around this subject.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frank, is that acceptable, you're the second?
Yeah, that was what I was wanting to happen, so, yes.
Alright, so now, the one, the one motion is withdrawn. We have a motion to bring the second to a study session for discussion and legal advice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Back to administrative council business. Councilwoman Frank? I, I will get you guys to learn how to turn their lights off, trust me. Alrighty. Staff have any more administrative council business? Alright, now, there be no further business to come before the City Council of Commerce, yes, sir?
Our suggestion for going through reports tonight is to pause the City Council meeting, shift over, take care of the one item of business for the GID meeting and then come back to the City Council meeting.
Gotcha.
And finish reports before you adjourn.
Alright, so I will go ahead and recess the City Council meeting. I know we'll open the ECA GID meeting.
One more, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't go so fast, sir.
And that's the E470 Commercial Area General Improvement District.
Can you reopen that, please?
Will the clerk please call a roll?
Chair Ford?
Here.
Vice Chair Teeter?
Here.
Board Member Madera?
Present.
Board Member Frank?
Present.
Board Member Davis?
Present.
Board Member Douglas?
Present.
Board Member Huesman?
Present.
Board Member Elliott?
Present.
Board Member Horiola?
Present.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Alrighty, there's only one member missing and that's Board Member Douglas. I'd ask for an excused absence in his absence. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Douglas tonight for the ECA GID meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Of the consent agenda, there are four items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the board wish to remove an item off the consent agenda? No? Alright, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda on the ECA GID board.
Thank you. Mr. Huesman?
Second the motion.
A motion is second to do that. Will the attorney for the Board of Directors please read the title of the four items?
Minutes of October 15, 2018, minutes of November 5, 2018, minutes of March 18, 2019, ordinance ECA GID 13 and ordinance including certain lands into the Commerce City E470 Commercial Area General Improvement District.
Thank you. Titles have been read, I have a motion and a second, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Consent agenda has been approved unanimously, eight, zero, one, excused absence. There are no pulled items and I'd like to call the meeting back to the City Council So we'll go back into our council meeting, take care of a couple more items. If I can find them here. No, I can't. Alright. Mr. Attorney, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report tonight except to sincerely thank Councilwoman Elliott for her service.
Thank you. Attorney?
I provided a litigation report this morning and I would like to echo the city manager's comments the last three years, it's been a privilege to serve with you.
Alrighty. I do have a few reports here at the Metro Mayor's Commissioners Youth Award Banquet or Dinner for the Commerce City event. I wanna thank the staff and I wanna thank all the youth that participated and the council members that were present. Rotary, and then we had our first-ever Talk Around Town event at Mama's Cafe. I wanna thank Jody and the staff that helped get that put together, as well as Mama's Cafe for hosting and our residents that showed up at seven o'clock in the morning to make comment. We had the Commerce City Business Awards Breakfast, which several folks showed up and we recognized our businesses and gave out some awards. Again, thank you to the economic development team for continuing to show support for our businesses. And then we had our second Talk Around Town at the Reunion Coffee House. I wanna thank the folks from the coffee house for putting that on and our staff. And then Rotary. I know there was a Boys and Girls Club event, I did not attend, but maybe some of the other council members did. I'm trying to keep this short because we have a special presentation that we need to take care of this evening. I know everybody in the audience has been waiting diligently to get to that. So that concludes my reports. There's nothing else, I wanna move into recognition of Councilwoman Elliott. So I wanna start off by, we will have the reception out in the hallway and I would please ask people to stay around and visit with Crystal out in the hallway, but I wanna start off by saying that it has been a pleasure to serve the years that I have on this council with Councilwoman Elliott. Crystal's been a friend of mine for a long time. We knew each other in high school and have known each other ever since and I know we will continue to be friends for a long, long time after this. But to have the opportunity to have someone like Crystal be able to serve with us on this council, bringing a whole different perspective to certain things, she would stand and fight with you about wanting to have the steam room at the rec center and things of that nature. So Crystal has been one of the quietest on council until you get to the point where it's something that she really has a passion for. Crystal has been very active in, in a group trying to help provide services in Commerce City. And it started out with, there was the purses and it, it just grew in
Purses to go.
Purses to go. And it just grew into something greater than that and I, I hope Crystal stays involved and I hope that this council will continue to support Crystal in that role because she's done a fantastic job of working with our nonprofits and, and trying to help with services that otherwise we wouldn't have in this community. She has a passion for that. I know she's going to school for social work and I want to wish her the best and give her all my blessings on her future endeavors. She has been a very, a very good council person. When you put in seven years and it's, it's one of the people that I got, have, have gotten very few complaints about, and in seven years to serve in that capacity and not, and not ruffle too many feathers, you're doing something right. I, I can't say the same for myself. I ruffle feathers more often than not, I think. Probably ruffled some tonight, a little while ago, but I'll deal with those in the morning. I ruffle them with the county all the time, right, Steve? Yeah, I see. So Crystal has just done an outstanding job. She's regularly attended all our meetings, she's been a good advocate for our community and And, you know, one of the things that I love the most about her is that she graduated from Adam City High School, and, and she grew up in this community. And not that those of you who serve on this council that didn't grow up in Commerce City, not that your perspective doesn't matter, but there's something to be said for being homegrown. She's in tune with the people that she grew up with. She remembers, she remembers the town that she grew up in, what it was and what it has become. And there's a, a saying that you don't know where you're going unless you know where you came from. And the one thing I can give to Councilwoman Elliott is, she knows where she came from. And she knows where she's going. So, there's a lot of people that don't have that perspective. And I hope that there's always some of that perspective on this council, because I think it matters. We don't want to lose the history of our community. And you remember, you know, watching the fireworks at Fairfax, the, the other restaurants that we used to have, and Little Pizza Haven, and all those things that a lot of the folks that live here now don't remember. And our community continues to grow, and that's a great thing. But you have to keep the perspective of where we came from. You were here when we were going through the trials and tribulations of the water and the, the arsenal and the contamination and, and the plume, and you remember, here comes Rusty at the dog track. There's a lot of things that, that you have that a lot of our future council members won't have, and I wish they would have. And so, for that, you're homegrown, and, and you're a very good, close friend of mine, and you have been an advocate for the residents of this community for almost eight years. And I applaud you for that, and I know you will do great things in the future. But I want to personally thank you for your service to this community. Thank you, Crystal. Alright. Mr. Teeter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know where to begin with this, so I'll just tell you how Crystal and I met, right off the top?
I don't know, should we share that story?
Yes, uh-huh. We're gonna share it, yes. It was actually at Madrid's, that's a bar. And I was coming out.
Wait a minute. Let's see this version.
I was coming out, she was coming in. She was delivering a cake for some kind of reception for her family, and I had just dealt with Madrid on a, a different subject, and for whatever reason, I think I held the door for, and we got to talking, and next thing we, it came out, I don't know which one got it out, but I, I think I told her I was running for City Council, and she told me she was running for City Council. And we had our little laugh about it right there in the hallway, and wished each other great success, and of course, seven and, a few months later, seven years and a few months later, we're here now. I, a very lovely young lady. She is, like you said, she was, she grew up in a family that taught her right from wrong and, and, and to how to present herself, and to be, to love and take care of other people. She has always been the lady on, on our council here that's been involved with ever, whatever it is to deal with the public, whether it's abusiveness, or sexual assault, or whatever the case may be. She's had a voice here to stand up for these, these people in need. And that's probably her best thing that I can say she has brought to this city. We, we've had a lot of great times together, and we've enjoyed them all. We've never had a bad word amongst each other, me and Crystal, that is, and she did a great job as far as I'm concerned, and I hate to say this, but I think, I teach her, I keep her as one of my own kids, so, thank you, Crystal.
Mr. Madera?
You know, the first time I met Crystal was a little different. It was at the spaghetti dinner, and it was one of my first campaign events, and she comes up to the table, and she looks at me, and she says, "We need to talk." And I was like, "What did I get myself into? I'm already making enemies, and I've only been on the campaign trail for a day." So, we ended up going and grabbing breakfast, and that's where I learned, you know, I knew nothing to begin with, so, you might not be saying much, but I learned so much from Crystal. She took me under her wing, and, you know, told me about her experiences of being on council, and all the work that goes into it, how to campaign, and, you know, how to meet people, and that's when I realized that Crystal was one of the most beloved council members on the council. And if you don't believe me, just go to the rec center with her in the morning, any day, and, you know, you're not gonna work out, you're just gonna sit there and chat the entire time, so, you know, and it's been, it's gonna be hard not having you on council. I know we've only served a short while together, but in that short term, you know, I've learned so much from you. You know, like the mayor said, you are one of the quietest council members, but at the same time, one of the hardest working, you know, everything that you've done to pull all these nonprofits together and get everyone organized, and, you know, it's like herding cats sometimes, and, you know, can just see you, you know, working tirelessly, and it's, it's really inspiring, because, you know, we're all busy with our, our jobs, and, you know, everything that you do outside of council with, you know, the work that you, you do, it's always, you know, in a serving capacity. You're always trying to help bring someone else up, and, you know, and at the same time, bring yourself up, going to school and doing everything that you're doing is just incredible. So, it's, we're gonna miss you, and, and I appreciate the opportunity that I had to work with you, and, you know, I, I know it's not just me, you treat everyone like family, but, you know, you definitely made me feel like family. So, thank you.
Mr. Horiola?
Thank you, Mayor. Echo what both of them and Rick said, but, you know, I just want to thank you for the support. I didn't know Crystal until the same time the campaign, and then we found out that she knew my mom for so many years, right? And that goes back to what Sean said, on how some of us have been here for years, and years, and years, and, and we have to always remember that. So, I just want to thank you. I want to thank you also for the service to our residents, and to specifically to the young females in Commerce City. You, you're a role model, you know, at this time where we need more female engagement, you sat up here and, and was a role model, and still a role model, for a lot of the young Latinas, especially young Latinas in our, in our, in our community, that sometimes they don't see people that look like them on this dais, on other daisies, and you did it. And that goes out for all the council women. As you guys can see, we have two compared to the seven men. So, I just want to thank you, and I want to leave you with this, Crystal, like we were talking earlier about your legacy, you know? You, you left a mark, and you'll continue to leave a mark. One of my favorite authors is Paulo Kalo, and it says, "If you are brave enough to say goodbye, life will regard, reward you with a new hello." Take that hello and run with it, because you've never forgotten where you came from, and I can't wait to see what you do. Thank you.
Mr. Huesman?
It has been a privilege to sit next to you for the last year and some change. I appreciate your words of wisdom. I appreciate how you are always well-composed during meetings, and always with a, when you speak, you speak with wisdom. You're not somebody who speaks just to hear their voice, unlike other people, myself included. I, I am sad to see you go. I am sad that you're not finishing out your term. I thank you for everything that you've done for the city for the last seven and a half years. I thank you for steering me correctly whenever you had the opportunity to, when I was smart enough to open my ears and listen. And I wish you nothing but the best of luck. I am so proud of you for going back to school and working on that degree. There is no age that is, that should be a barrier for continuing to educate ourselves, and you've proven that. And I'm not saying you're old. And on, on top of that, I think one of the things that everybody here is, is probably remiss in not saying is, I think we're all gonna miss the baking, so I hope that you continue to bring treats in. I wish you the best of luck in your new position. I think that there isn't a better person suited for that position, and I know you're gonna do great in it, and I know that you're going to be a key voice for this city whenever that event comes around, to make sure that everybody in this city is well-represented. So I thank you for what you've done, I thank you for what you're about to do, and I wish you Godspeed and good luck.
Councilwoman Frank?
So, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Crystal for your friendship. Yeah, and that's the girls go. And, but I, but I also, Crystal, I admire you so much for being a single mother, because I know being a mom is hard and trying to juggle, sorry, a full-time job, going to school, everything that you're doing, and I honestly, I think you are one of the most amazing women I have ever met. And I just, I don't, I don't have much more to say than that. I just think you're amazing, and I'm so proud of you, and continue to do amazing things.
Y'all, you know what? I just, after hearing about Benjamin Huesman's little speech, I just realized we're gonna miss out on the baked goods. That's really hurting my feelings. Everything, my goodness. Don't forget about the Puzzles at Christmas time, Crystal. I want to...
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Absolutely, Mr. Davis. Yeah, you're not, I, I gotta tell you, someone needs to fix Davis's light, 'cause it never comes up.
It says you are the speaker, so I think it's you.
Well, I don't know, it doesn't say that on mine.
But that, this sets me up exactly for what I was gonna say to Crystal.
Alright, Davis, clear the floor.
Being the new guy here, I kind of feel like the foster kid, and I feel like my foster sister just kicked me out of the house, and she's going away. I've only known Crystal, I've only known you for, for a few months, and when I met you, I, I realized that you're, you're a soft-hearted person. We go to the same church, and when I started asking around, I, I realized soon that not only Landing Place Church, but the entire city knows you. And you're one of the most caring, incredible, and honest people I've ever met, and your love for your son, I mean, just touches me, because anytime you talk about him, anytime we come back from a trip and we bring a little trinket, I mean, you go out of your way to, to just show me the love for that kid that you have. You're a great mom, and I'm really proud to call you my friend, and I, I look forward to watching you in your, in your new career, and you're just gonna kick butt, and it's gonna be great to see you. This, this, this city and this council will, you know, will miss you a lot. Thank you for all your service. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm done.
Now I'm going to open it up. Remember, you'll all have a chance to visit with Crystal out in the atrium, but I want to open it up to those who want to come up and say something, just congratulate her or, or wish her well. So, folks, we'll start on the left side of the room, including the staff in the front. You have anything you'd like to say, you guys can say, you've got microphones in front of you. We'll work from the front back, so, raise your hand if there's something you, you wanna, you wanna say. In the back. I'm gonna, JD, come on up. Ladies first.
So, I'm not sure I've ever been on this end. Excuse my, my dress. I came straight from work. I did not want to miss this. Ms. Crystal, you're my sister soldier. I already said goodbye to you, what, a year and a half ago? I would never miss not being here for you. Both women on there know how difficult it is to, and, and, and I'm not taking away or discounting what the role is if you're a male. I just know what it's like to be a female, and it is a very difficult thing to, to put it all together and give, give that hundred percent. So, very much appreciated the time that you and I spent together. Crystal still tells the story of when we met, was I went to her campaign and said, "You have to win. There are not enough women that sit in these seats." So, thank you for showing the girls out there that this is a place they should be. They, these seats belong to them just as much as any, anybody else. So, you've done a good job and a great role model. Yeah, I know you love your kids, because I can't tell you how many countless hours we spent talking about your children. But I always appreciated the fact that I sat right here where Steve was, and even though we were divided, we were never divided. We always knew what was in each other's hearts and souls. So, thank you. Good luck. We'll do much.
I'm waiting for my wife.
She's hit those well, didn't she?
I'll do this again. Renee Bullack, 6130 Ivanhoe Street, Commerce City, Colorado. Three minutes. Thank you, Crystal. I know how you feel tonight. I know exactly how you feel, I know what's going through your heart, because of the fact that, just like JD said, a year and a half ago, we went through the same thing, and you're all gonna go through it, and it really, it takes a lot to be up here now and sit, but it really takes bravery to have to leave, because that's when you have to, that's when you're polarized, and everybody's looking at you and saying. But I can say this for Crystal, I was on council with you. We had the greatest council. I don't want to discount anything that's happening now, but I can say that the council that we had was the greatest council. We got so much done, and it wasn't because of any individual, it was because of one council that thought alike and worked alike. And even though we did not always agree, and there was times that we had some really deep disagreements, we always left as friends. Yes. I mean, there was times at study session, I sat on the side of the table where I was just to the right of Sean, and Crystal sat over on the other side in the middle, and there'd be times when I would be discussing what my point of view is, and I look over at Crystal, and it was like, "You've got to be crazy." And I know that you got to be crazy, look, because I've got it from a lot of people, even the mayor, just told me many a time, "I'm not gonna let you talk, because if you talk now, you will not be good." But thank you so much for your service and your dedication and everything you've done for this city, and I know that you can only shine brighter as a star, because you're a star right now. Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, I said what I said earlier. Thanks for your service. Enjoy the new chapter in your life. We love you.
Is there anyone else on the left side of the room? Commissioner?
My name is Steve Oderesia. I live in Welby, Colorado, and I'm on the Adams County Board of County Commissioners. I'm the chair of the Board of County Commissioners, and we would like to say thank you for all of your years of service to Adams County and to Commerce City. You've been an outstanding ally and friend, and I can't wait to see where you go next. So, wish you the best of luck, and we look forward to having you still involved in this community. Thank you so very much for everything you've done.
Anyone else on the left side of the room? Alright, we're going to the right side of the room, front to back. Anybody on the right side of the room want to come up and say anything on camera, or you want to wait until the reception? I knew Guillermo was coming up.
Thank you. You're a supporter of the community. You knew what our concerns were. You may not have had all the reports or whatever you needed to get what we truly need in this city. city, but you hung in there. You're a role model for a lot of the young ladies that are there right now, and you were a mother, person that held her integrity, and you did speak up. There's other people here that may not know your history, but little by little, it comes out. And your determination is what I respect, and that's why we worked hard for you the first time. You know it. So I have the best wishes for you in perspective to your life and what you need to accomplish. So here again from the minority community, I thank you for bringing those up and giving us the strength to bring a Boys and Girls Club in perspective to what the kids needed in this community. The recreation center, again, the arsenal, and I'm hoping that you set that example that we needed because of what this community did, that we keep it free and clear and clean for the future of this city. I know that it's hard for me to say other things here, but again, God bless you and good luck.
All right, anyone else on this side of the room? All right. With that said, then, I want to give Crystal a chance to address all of us.
How about that? Now everyone can hear me. I've played this speech over and over in my head, and I, I never, well, first of all, I think I could get away with more than three or four chapters of my speech, so I've narrowed it down to just a few chapters. I'm kidding. You know, first and foremost, I am Commerce City proud through and through. I lived in other cities over the years. I moved away in 1987 after I graduated, moved out of state for a while, lived in Broomfield with my then-husband for 10 years, and then moved around a little bit. But when I moved back in 2010, I had faced an illness and I wanted to be closer to family, and I can remember, and Mom, I know you'll respect this, but I said, "Grandma's house, Mom, it needs so much work." I just, I don't know that I, I just, maybe a year, maybe two years. It's been nine years, and I live in one of the oldest communities, as my colleague here, Mr. Madera, in Adams Heights, and I couldn't be prouder from where I came from. And then, just like you mentioned, you remember where you came from. I, I went back to where I came from, and, and I felt a sense of community being there because it's a, a small-town feel, even though our city has grown by leaps and bounds over the last even seven and a half years that I've been on council. And so I'm, I'm, I'm just proud. I'm really proud of what our community has accomplished over the years. I want to go back to 2011 when I had decided to run for council, and I sat out in the audience and I was watching a council meeting, and at this, at that point, Tony Johnson had sat in this seat, and I had known him for a number of years, and he had resigned his position that evening. And as I was contemplating what to say this evening, I, I was just wondering, what was going through his mind? He knew he was going to make an announcement of something that he truly loved and didn't want to give up, but yet it was time to move on to something, something else. And so go back to, again, to 2011. We were, we're at the election watch party at Worth Manor. You had, Sean had invited me to attend, and I had invited my family. My older daughters were there, my mom and dad, and I can just remember watching the results on the big screen, and my name was at the top. And I, I just kept thinking, is that, is that, is that real? You know, I mean, I've known a lot of people in this community for most of my life. I worked for the Water District for 10 years, got to know people, but when it came for this race, I was the only female, and I was up against five other gentlemen except for one that had had to drop out probably a month before the, the election. And I just kept going. I just, you know, I, I said, you know, I want this bad enough, but it's okay if I lose. If I don't, if I don't win, it's not the end of the world, but I still have to just try my hardest. And Sean gave me a lot of support. You connected me to the right people, if you will, and, and showed me the ropes, and for that, I thank you. But I could just remember standing there and just astonished that my name was at the top of that list, and I think everyone around me was kind of laughing, like, "Is she okay? Is she, maybe she should sit down?" And I just knew that from that point on, my life had changed, in a good way and also in a very scary way, because it was a lot. You know, you look at this, and, and it's, it's not easy sitting up here, making decisions for community members. You don't make everyone happy. You try, but I take this seat very seriously. Everything that I think about, and we mentioned that I'm one of the quietest ones. Well, I'm not now. I'm actually gonna talk, probably make up for the last seven and a half years that I was quiet, so maybe get a snack and come back and join me here for Chapter Two. I think it's because of the fact that, you know, people believed in me when I probably didn't even believe in myself. I wasn't necessarily a politician. I wasn't savvy with national politics. I just knew that I liked to serve and I liked to help people. And actually, it goes back to my years in Aurora. I worked there in the Mayor's City Council Office for six years, and I remember my colleague, and I know I've mentioned this story before, but she had double-dog dared me to run for council. When somebody double-dog dares you, you just have to do it, right? It's on. And she said, "You know, you should run for council in your own, your own community." And I'm like, "Well, there's an at-large seat, but I don't, I don't know. I don't know if I could even swing that. I, I live in Ward One. I don't know if that's, and that seat wasn't available." And so I just look back at those times. Those are the things that came to my mind this weekend because I've contemplated this for months, and I, I, I truly did not want to let this go, but in the same token, I knew it was just time. I just couldn't keep doing the things that I was doing, trying to balance school and home life and everything else, and, and I wanted someone else to have a chance as well. I mean, I didn't want to, you know, say, "Okay, two months and I'm out." No, I, I wanted an opportunity for someone to sit here and at least get a feel for it and, and maybe catch the bug like I did and want to serve the community. And so with that, we look at it now, seven and a half years later, I am truly blessed beyond measure. I've had so much support. I go back again to 2015 when things were really rough for me. We had a, many of you know the story, but had a family member that was terminally ill, and two weeks before the election, he passed away. And my campaign just stopped, and I was ready to give up. And I'll never forget, Steve Douglas and Paulo said, "Give me some of your door hangers, and when we're out walking the neighborhoods, we'll drop off your, your stuff with ours." And I had members, I mean, neighbors and school friends message me on Facebook when they saw my post and said, "Hey, what can we do? Can we make phone calls, or what can we do? Can we wave signs?" And I can't believe the outpour of the community. And Guillermo, you were part of that as well, both the first campaign and the second, and we pulled through. And I, I, you know, I would have finished a lot stronger, but I just, I was ready to give up, and I just said, "You know what? This is in God's hands." And by the grace of God and by the people who loved me and believed in me, I won my, my seat. And so I look back at those times, and I sit here in the audience now, and I think, and look out in the audience, and I think, "You know what? I'm so glad that people took a chance and voted for me and believed in me because I truly love this community, and I want to continue to, to do the things that I do, except at a different, from a different perspective, from a different position." You know, people have mentioned that, you know, "Good luck with your new endeavors," and I had applied for a position with Adams County just last month, and I just accepted the position at Adams County, and I start April 15th, and I'm truly proud to be serving again at a capacity that is going to make a difference in our, in our community. And the position that I've accepted is the Community Liaison for the Census. And so I'll be working with my former colleague, Paulo Diaz, actually, he's my boss, so if he's out there, hi. Sorry, I'm all cry, ugly cry face up here, but I'm truly proud to be working alongside him. He believed in me, once again, someone that said, "I think you would be wonderful for this role. You should, you can, should consider applying for it." And so here in the next few months, I'm going to be the one on the podium, speaking to all of you, asking for your help in, in collaborative efforts for our hard-to-count populations here in the city. So with that, I just want to thank my mom and my dad. My brother couldn't make it tonight. He had to work this evening. My, my, my daughter is, wasn't able to come as well. My son is here. He doesn't want me to call him out. He's really quiet, but I said, "It means a lot if you're here for me tonight, Gianni." I said, "Because, you know, every night that I sat up here, I would text him two or three times just to make sure that he was okay," because many times I left him home alone. And I just wanted him to understand and know what I do up here in all those seven and a half years. I mean, he's 14 now, so he was, he had just turned, just turned seven when I, when I started. It just means a lot to have him here with me this evening because he's the reason why I do what I do now, and I'm just blessed. I have good friends, good family, great colleagues. Everything that everyone said this evening has been so heartwarming. Cried my makeup off, but I have, I have my makeup bag all, all touched up here. But it's been, it's, it's been an honor, truly an honor, serving with you. Even if we haven't served for very many months together, Steve, I do consider you a true friend. Taking the time out to bring home something from Los Angeles Police Department, a hat for my son, means a lot. So thank you for that. Thank you to city staff for always making me look good and smart and keeping me from getting myself in trouble. Again, I was city staff for nine years, and I know what it's like. I know what it's like behind the scenes to get those council packets ready. I know what it's like to jump on council demands. I worked, like I said, I worked for city council for six years, and so it wasn't easy, but I, I commend you all. I think we have a great organization. Brag about Commerce City to my colleagues in Brighton. I don't know if Lynn was gonna make it this evening, but I, I always brag on, on our staff because I think we have a top-notch organization, and our staff is bar none. So thank you to everyone. Thank you for everyone that's here this evening, and thank you for letting me ramble on almost seven and a half years of conversation that I've had pent up. So thank you all and God bless.
It might be fun to have the city council join you, Mayor, so that you can all present these items.
All right, everybody, come on down. Before you have a chance to touch up on the camera. This is a parking sign, so that when and if you ever do have some difficulty in other, you can put this up wherever. Thank you. And that has to be honored or we'll send the police department. All right. One more. There you go. You gotta have that.
All right. Just don't get it close up to my face.
We'll keep it wide. We'll keep it wide.
Yeah, Connor shot it with Sarah Block. Julia Roberts or someone like that. I don't mind nothing.
All right, everybody, why don't we join Crystal out in the atrium for a little reception? Thank you all for being here.
Hey, Sean, just for fun, say we're adjourned. Are we adjourned?
Yep, dude, you're in us.
We are adjourned.
How's that?
I did it for you.
You were all good.